Frank, a kind of vote of high commissioner last session. Commissioner, gentlemen, would you leave it from prayer and say it?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given each and every one of us. God, we thank you for this time that you've given us here together today. And thank you for every good discussion we're going to have. We thank you for understanding the wisdom. And only you can afford, we ask you for that now in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Like the nations, you do the flag, and the United States of America. You truly honor the witnesses and saints, and we age under God, and in the pistol, there will be a living justice for all.
Matthew, sir.
Might I give a brief report to you?
He said, "Frank, so might I go to say what we give, what we do about?"
Okay.
What we do to vote, come on.
Okay, Commissioners, basically, so, on Tuesday of this week, we received notice from USDA that we had until March 12th to send them a letter, a term that we use of proposal to proceed with a $10 million loan, or request to de-obligate the funds for the hospital improvement project no later than Thursday, March 12th. I'm just reading my item off my report, y'all. I'll go right ahead with that. Rural Development obligated the $10 million for the hospital improvement project in June 22nd, 2015, but there's been no express interest in proceeding with this project since March 12th, 2019 conference call. Last year, we received a agency for healthcare administration, stage two standard review approval of the hospital improvement project, or the board paused the guaranteed maximum process. So, what I'm asking you for today, all I'm asking you for today, is the authority to contact USDA, and I will need to engage the services of Joe Bynum, only for the purpose of working out and finding out what they need for this proposal to proceed. I am not asking the board in any way, any manner today, to agree to the billing project. I am not even asking you to agree to the loan terms, effectively. I just need to know if this board wants to keep this money obligated or not, and find out from USDA what it will take to keep the money obligated. That's it. As the board remembers, both proposals, you talked to both people proposing to One Alliance, and also talked to Mr. Roger Hall from Ascension Sacred Heart, multiple times and occasion, Roger Hall himself has said to me, "When Franklin County has to pay for the freestanding emergency room, he thinks the USDA loan is the best option." That's his motto, not mine. He said it here, he said it to me in a one-on-one conversation, and Commissioner Lockley, if you remember, when we sat in the same room and met with Mr. Roger Hall, he said the same thing. Alliant likewise, Mr. Jim Coleman has also stated, "This is the best option to pay for the hospital improvement project, if that's what you're going to do." So either which proposal you go with, Commissioners, you're going to need a loan to pay for the billing. There's a misunderstanding, I think, I think, or disconnection, that some people think that Sacred Heart is billing the billing and paying for it. That is wrong, Commissioners. Franklin County has to pay for that billing. It'll meet to their specifications, and I believe Mr. Hall had asked that they use their own contractor, that I'm not clear, I think you prefer their contractor, but it's a note that this county will have to pay. Either which, when we go forward, Commissioners, we will need a loan. I am not asking this board to commit to, I've seen everything about the building, the scrambling to come for. No, that's not what we're doing. We need to find out from USDA, well, I need to find out from the board if the board wants to de-obligate the loan, or try and keep it going for maybe 60, 90 days until we figure out what we're doing. I will say this to you, that we will discuss on Tuesdays on my Tuesday's report, Mr. Roger Hall, like another, I'll have to come before the board, so I'll need you guys to do a special meeting, authorize another special meeting before that. That we'll deal with on Tuesday. Today, all I need to know from the board, do you want to move forward and try to obligate this money, or you have no more interest in this loan? Let's move ahead, we'll have to find, when we make a decision which direction we're going in, we'll have to find another option to fund whichever structure we build. That's all I'm asking today, Commissioners.
Over to you, Commander.
Gentlemen, I ask you not to count my first comments as part of my allotted three minutes. I ask for your indulgence speaking early before this meeting. I have been asked to be in Carabelle at 2:30 for a historic preservation meeting with state officials. That meeting has been scheduled for several weeks. Since projects to be discussed were created and begun when I had the privilege to be mayor, it is important for me to be present. Thank you for allowing me to honor my commitment to my own community. Now, my comments. This plan to meet on the future of the hospital construction project at a time when most voters are working and with less than 48 hours notice to the public, seems to create its own message of subterfuge and chicanery. With a mid-March response deadline given to you for the loan update, and with regularly scheduled commission meeting in four days, what is the need and urgency for this special meeting? You have had excellent proposals for the future of Franklin County healthcare made to you over these last months. You have a choice of a hands-on standalone emergency room fully staffed and equipped by an award-winning hospital organization. On the other hand, a consultation plan with pledges and promised goals, together with TMH, which has not proven to be a real partner after many years of supposed cooperation. You sought consultation through the Texas A&amp;M grant. You listened to repeat presentations by the healthcare services that wish to enter Franklin County's ring. You failed to make a decision for those who need modern, competent health services by providing, by refusing to provide real leadership for your patients. By moving forward on this loan effort, you are turning up your noses at these principles such as Sacred Heart, which invested time and money in feasibility studies to prove they could indeed successfully and competently serve those who get sick in Franklin County. They even promised to bring mammography to our women and men, something Weems has not provided for years. What kind of services will Alliant bring besides bookkeeping? You have bookkeepers. You need treatment professionals. To move forward with this hospital loan agreement now for the mediocre $10 million, which will not fully build nor equip anything but a skeletal facility, is an insult to those who voted for you, who trusted you, and who wanted to know you would do the right thing for their healthcare at this pivotal time. Maybe you can revamp the loan proposal. Build the standalone emergency room. Don't try to build a hospital which will have less than one patient per night, which will have old equipment, and which will require taxpayers to subsidize it to eternity. At the end, I want to share two administrative stories with you. Do you know that one of the Weems administrators took a spouse to Sacred Heart for emergency treatment last weekend? And I had knee injections done yesterday by a Sacred Heart doctor. Although this is only the second time we have met, I boldly asked if he had knowledge of the administrative efforts made toward our Franklin County healthcare. When he said yes, I asked him to accept my apology, as a tax-paying resident, to those administrators who spent time and...
Thank you.
Thank you. He looked me right in the eye, and he said, "We only wanted to help." Thank you.
Steve Pritchard down from Citizens Express aid for Franklin County. My organization that was working on the ambulance project. Very upset, and the entire workings of this county commission turns my stomach that the meetings are at nine in the morning, there is no interaction with the Commissioners on resolutions, and it's almost as if the decisions are made before you come into this room. And if I was going to say I want nobody to turn out for this meeting, I would wait till the paper to break on Thursday, I'd do it on Friday, and I'd say, "Not before work." I'd do it midday when nobody could show up. There needs to be an opportunity for citizens to be able, for working citizens to show up at these meetings, and there needs to be meetings at night. It's amazing that these people filled this room today. I was involved, I had the U-Haul franchise in Riverhead for years, in town for years, in East Point, and my U-Haul franchise, my number one person that was renting was a senior who had money leaving this county for healthcare. These county commissioners and this hospital need not be run by a county commission, it needs to be run by a hospital. Air ambulance? There are four airlifts a week out of this county because our hospital cannot handle what needs to be handled here. About $44,000 a pop, they're coming from Perry to airlift out of here. I sat down with our town attorney, off the record, and had a conversation with him, but I'll make it public, I was sitting on a different matter. I said, "My wife was airlifted for $44,000 to save her life out of this county." I said, "If we put a helicopter in this county, we could get grant money, we could get the revenue of $44,000 in airlift coming into the county, to the sheriff's department, it would be $8 to $10 million a year to offset the cost of that helicopter, and we could provide, we could provide support to surrounding counties and make money." And I was told we can't afford that, but I just told them how to afford that. We're shrimpers, we're handy men, we're auto parts salesmen, we're all different walks of life on this county commission. I had somebody come into my shop, and woman said, "You know what? Forty years ago, I was born, I lived in Carabelle, and my parents made sure they drove me past Weems to St. Joe to have me." We don't need, we need hospital professionals running this hospital, and I really think that this $10 million right now is, it'll pay for nothing, and it's just giving a foothold to go to the next step. This is like grandma's roll-top desk. Everybody says it's beautiful, it's worth money, what do we do with it? And it just sits there. What's the difference now and this group of people and 40 years ago? We need Sacred Heart in this town, we need a hospital, and if we've got a freestanding emergency room, and you know what? Everybody here with Commissioners, all these Commissioners are worried about projects in their district and how they vote. You know what? However you've been told to vote before you come in this meeting, or whatever you've been promised, to hell with it. We don't need this. Let's move forward and put healthcare in the hands of healthcare professionals. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Mayor Kevin Vagos of Appalachia Cola. I would urge you to fulfill the request Michael Moran made of you, and just keep this alive to debate it further. I understand all the different pressures you're under and the two competing proposals. The city of Appalachia Cola strongly feels that the hospital should remain in Appalachia Cola, or some healthcare facility should remain here. And also say, I think, the whole notion that one proposal is vastly superior to another, or that Sacred Heart, you know, is the magic solution, is just ridiculous. You know, it's a complex subject. Both proposals have some positives and some negatives. I think you've properly taken the time to look harder at both proposals. So I'd urge you to, you know, at least keep this project alive. You know, voters in the referendum before, as well as in our local agreements, you know, we're expecting a hospital to be built in Appalachia Cola or some facility. But keep it alive and see what USDA says in response, whether they can give you 60 or 90 days, or whatever it might be, to consider this further. And I thank you for all your work on this. It's a complicated subject, healthcare for any rural county. And I'll just add one little thing. You're criticized for holding meetings in the day. I get criticized for holding in the evening, where my meetings go too long at night, and people are like, "Oh, my God, your meetings last till nine or 10 o'clock." So it's tough to hold public meetings, and I appreciate everybody that comes out. But finally, I would just say also, the idea of moving the hospital from Appalachia Cola to East Point, you know, I would never suggest moving the standalone health facility from Carabelle to somewhere else. So let's not engage in a system of musical chairs. You know, we may need a facility in East Point at some point, or the island, too. I support all that. You know, a standalone emergency room or some sort of thing, but the city commission of Appalachia Cola feels that we need to keep the hospital or some facility here in Appalachia Cola. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. OPM, also known as Other People's Money, has been used to prop up Weems for 13 years. I would suggest the worst thing that ever happened to Weems was the creation of the healthcare trust fund. It allowed over $20 million to be improperly used to prop up a hospital where there are too many bad outcomes. The fact of having a deep trough of seemingly endless money has allowed you the unusual luxury of continuing this failed social experiment simply by transferring money to them each month. Some months, even that's not been enough. It has belated discussion on what makes sense. The public has largely been excluded from a conversation on the subject for some reason. We can speak, but we cannot get answers from you, our representatives. Even healthcare tax monies are not a never-ending supply. With more than 80% of the trust fund money already spent, you can't afford a decent clinic, much less a hospital. Where will all the additional money come from to pay for a $1.5 million new CAT scan machine when the old one you have gives up the ghost? How about a $350,000 mammography machine you don't have, and Sacred Heart will bring to the county at no cost? A new, larger facility costs more to operate than an old one. How will you pay for a new Weems when you can't even pay and maintain the old one? How much will a new hospital cost? You don't even know. Yet you are here to make decisions on how to take down a $10 million loan? How will you fund the next $5 million, $6 million, $7 million, or God knows how much more will be needed to build an edifice to broken promises? It's certainly not coming from the healthcare trust fund. At the beginning of every kind of commission meeting, we ask for divine guidance, but when you make decisions based on emotion and for reasons of patronage, you fail the test right out of the gate. What's worse, you know it. Why the stated hatred and mistrust of Sacred Heart? Commissioners have told me to my face that Sacred Heart won't fly, but have you been honest enough to say it publicly? They can never quite explain the why part, but they say it just the same. Weems is where people lose their golden hour. I receive too many calls where the lack of services or great emergency room doctors meant substandard critical care was delivered and people died. Where amateur board members play at being astute businessmen and women and are guided by a seemingly everlasting supply of deficient CEOs and CFOs, 12 and counting. Or engage in crazy talk of making Weems into an abortion clinic. Where do you find these people? Talk to an ethical board member who just resigned. Talk to your current board members and ask them why some of them wish they'd never gotten on the board. Loving and helpful hospital employees won't receive the benefit standards, standard everywhere else, because there will never be enough money to pay them and provide standard benefits. Yes, Weems is a critical patient on life support, asking that you throw them one more lifeline. You must deny them this time, before we are straddled with this seemingly everlasting debt and a run on the general fund in future years. Commissioners call a hurry-up, snap meeting essentially in the dark to decide the question of generation in an instant, because they can't organize a logical decision process of this consequence. This is an election year, gentlemen. Know that people are watching you. Are you sure you're undertaking the people's will? What about Weems hospital leaders who talk out of one side of their mouth saying how great Weems services are, that when they or a loved one they need emergency help goes straight to Sacred Heart instead of Weems? Yes, this happened this month. Duty, honor, country require you abandon the course you have set before you, and instead represent the best interest of the people of your county, and not Appalachia Cola's self-interest. I could stand up here for an hour and talk about numbers, financial irregularities, waste, fraud, and worse. Instead, I end with a plea, really a prayer, that you stop, take a deep breath, and set aside political interest, and do what is right for the people. Remember, of the people, by the people, for the people. This may be your last chance to do so and make it right. Thank you.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Tony Partington of East Point. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this very vital and important issue. Weems Hospital has a rich history, and it has no doubt played a part in all of your lives. It has certainly played a part in my family's lives. All of my family members have received care at Weems, and I have had the pleasure of working there. And now, two decades into the 21st century, you, as our elected officials, are charged with the responsibility to make a decision which will most certainly affect the lives of all of your constituents, the people of Franklin County. Much has happened and changed in healthcare since 1959, when Weems first opened its doors. The delivery of medical care today hardly resembles the practices of the middle of the last century. What worked well with the expertise of time has been improved and replaced with state-of-the-art technology. Also, the world has changed. The economics of today only vaguely resemble what the economy of this country, and more importantly, Franklin County, was in 1959. Like it or not, healthcare has changed. It has changed in the way it is provided, the way it is supplied, the way it is organized, and the way it is paid for. The economy of scale dictates whether or not a medical practice or a hospital succeeds or fails. I can speak to this firsthand and tell you that before moving to Franklin County permanently in 2014, my wife, Kristy, and I worked many years in healthcare in the Twin Cities. I worked as a certified medical assistant and surgical first assist for a thriving private surgical practice, and it was thriving. Yet, despite that fact, the doctors who owned the practice simply could not sustain the company financially. So the practice was sold to a large, successful healthcare organization. As I said, the practice I worked for was thriving. Sadly, that cannot be said about Weems. But the residents and visitors of Franklin County do need and do deserve quality healthcare in a world as it is today that simply cannot be realized or accomplished through a private rural hospital that would be a decades-long financial burden to us and our children. I would hope and kindly ask that you consider seriously the opinion and counsel of those who do have professional healthcare experience. Ascension Sacred Heart has presented you and the people of Franklin County a comprehensive and financially viable solution to the issue of healthcare in our county. Please consider this, all of your constituents, and future Franklin County residents in this very important issue before you. Thank you.
My name's Patrick Lee Chan, and I'm a taxpayer on the island. I have here a letter authored by a Mr. Tim Sullivan, so on behalf of Mr. Sullivan, I will be presenting his letter. Gentlemen, a less than 48-hour notice to the public for a very controversial topic has not been decided is an affront to the voters of Franklin County. There is nothing that must be decided immediately. The issue of this special meeting concerns the funds that were obligated on June 22nd, 2015. This issue has been open for 1,697 days. All of a sudden, there is such an urgent need to make a rushed decision, giving the public a less than two-day notice. On the top of the meeting agenda, it states, "Any information for distribution to the commission must be submitted Thursday prior to the Tuesday meeting or 120 hours before." This proposed meeting is on a Friday, not a Tuesday. The meeting was called in less than 48 hours, not allowing for the 120-hour information deadline as required on the meeting agenda notice. These inconsistencies and mistakes happen when proper protocol is not followed. What else is being overlooked in haste? The building of the hospital and its location is yet to be decided. Why does the commission feel unnecessary to rush into a decision to spend a large sum of taxpayer money when this issue has not been settled with the voters? There are many questions voters have asked have yet to be answered. The National Assistant Grant through the Texas A&amp;M University Center for Optimizing Rural Health is to identify and address issues that may be contributing to the future viability or financial vulnerability of Franklin County's healthcare needs. This team will answer a lot of the financial and logistical questions, if given the opportunity. One point made at the public workshop given by the Texas A&amp;M team was the importance of having a healthcare facility within 30 minutes of a critical care need. When asked if the Franklin County citizens would best be served by a centrally-located facility where most Franklin County residents and visitors would be within the 30-minute critical care time period. Dr. Nancy Dickey, a former president of the American Medical Association, with 40 years of experience in rural primary care stated, "Of course, it only makes sense, doesn't it? Gentlemen, the voters of Franklin County deserve better representation. Regards, Tim Sullivan."
I'm Susan Leach, and I am reading a letter from Jim Warner, who is not able to be here at this meeting. Commissioners, I am shocked to hear about this special meeting at such short notice for such a waiting matter. One would think the normal course of business would be months of public hearings, getting the public behind any recommended course of action. There are two main issues. The first is the business issue. If there wasn't audit of Weems and transparency, the current business model of Weems may show it as losing money with low usage by the public. So before any building is built, what is the healthcare business model that would financially support a healthcare center for the future? What services would it support and what would not be supported, and Franklin County residents have to go to a major healthcare facility? Sacred Heart's experience on successful business models would suggest some type of extended ER would be financially supported, but not a full hospital. But having said that, what is the business model with detailed financial figures and assumptions that you are working off of? Could you please share that? The second issue is brand name. Clearly, Sacred Heart and Tallahassee Memorial have successful brand names in the healthcare business with the public. Sacred Heart's healthcare facility in fact, in Port St. Joe, just recently was awarded five stars. I would suggest that Weems may not have such a brand name, and we would certainly need something behind us. It is said that 85% of the healthcare services of Franklin County residents currently are provided outside of Franklin County. This would suggest that detailed polling of Franklin County residents would be needed to support any business model before a decision on construction is made. Suggested questions and such research would be, "Where do you currently get your healthcare? What kind of healthcare do you get? If a facility was built in Franklin County, would you be open to change and go there instead? If Party A was running it, would that influence your decision? How about Party B or Party C? Would locating such facility in Appalachia Cola influence your decision to change? How bad if it was in East Point, Carabelle, St. George Island? What would your second choice of location be? If the results of such polling suggest support facility, but only if Party C runs it, and only if it's located in, for instance, Appalachia, then that would support your business model? Commissioners, the decision of yours at this very special meeting potentially impacts the citizens of Franklin County. It will impact them for decades. I implore all of you to do the above homework before making such an impactful decision. Just going ahead, borrowing such money and building a facility without questions being answered could result in having such a little payoff. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, I would appreciate if people would come up telling us, "Don't tell us about what we're doing. Part of that stuff y'all talking about happened when this thing voted on 15 years ago. We talking about something different."
We can speak. We can speak.
Repeat what you're supposed to be speaking about.
And you need to pay attention, Noah.
I do. I am.
Commissioners, may I politely ask Mr. Parrish to look up and pay attention to what is being said?
I know it. It never worked again, so you just...
I've also noticed you reading, and so on. I'd really appreciate it if you would actually pay attention. You are meant to be representing the people of Franklin County and making decisions for their good. You do what you know full well to be for their benefit. You do what you know full well to be for their benefit. Vote for the Sacred Heart deal. Do the right thing. And remember, we all vote. Commissioners, you have heard the totally convincing arguments for Sacred Heart, so I don't need to repeat them. Thank you.[615.11][615.11][applause]
Ma'am, would you give us your name for the record and the pin to the microphone, please?
Elizabeth Rothby.
Yes.
R-O-F for Frank, F for Frank E-Y.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Brewer. I live in Appalachia Cola. I've lived there for the past five years. I understand that Michael Rowan actually put the purpose of the meeting today very expertly before you, but I have been to many, many meetings in the past five years, and many who've lived there longer than I have gone to even more meetings. The controversy about what kind of healthcare, who's going to pay for it, where it is, all that are many. The next 30 days is not going to get you any further down the road. The can's been kicked a lot by a lot of people. So, it's time to look at the handwriting on the wall, give up the funding that is really not going to help you build anything because you don't yet know what you're going to be building or where. So, authorize your county attorney to give up the obligation for funding for a project that is way short of being an actual proposal. In 60 or 90 days, you're still upping a half a proposal. The plans are too old. The industry has moved on. It cannot be rectified by the path you are taking. So, what you should do is give up the obligation for USDA funding and move forward on something that's going to be better and right for the citizens of Franklin County regarding healthcare. So, this is sort of a fork in the road. The fork in the road is to deactivate your request for the funding and get out of the healthcare business and leave it to the professionals. All right.[736.13][736.13][applause]
Hi, commissioners. Mike Hornberg, St. George Island. As has been previously, I won't harp on an old subject, but to call a special meeting when Mr. Rowan said that we didn't have to make a decision for almost four weeks, but we have to have a special meeting today, and there's nothing going to be decided here that couldn't have been decided Tuesday, which is, in my opinion, not for an emergency meeting. I'm thinking we have a referendum, we have a general election coming up in November. Why don't we let the voters decide what we want to do going forward in healthcare? It's changed a lot since the ballot of 2007, which mentions the healthcare. It doesn't say anything about the hospital has to be in Appalachia Cola. It doesn't mention anything about an inter-later agreement that was signed a month before the referendum, if I have the correct copy. And, but let's put it to the voters and let the voters decide because this is a touchy issue, who we want to do it, Sacred Heart, TMA. So, let's do that. One thing that I haven't heard in any of this, and $10 million is not going to build what we need to build. We all know that. We're not delusional and think that we can do anything for $10 million. And the number one thing that I haven't seen anyone discuss is how basically are we going to pay for the $10 million, much less more? When you look at the amount of money that we're going to have to pay each year, and that doesn't include any services, getting doctors in here, that just for the interest and principal and interest on the $10 million loan is substantial. And I think we just need to put it to the voters and let us decide. Thank you.[851.73][851.73][applause]
Hello. My name is Wanda Lekka Johnson. I'm here from Landarch Village. I'm on the board of directors for the Landarch Village Association, and I would like to try and represent some of the feelings that we have in that area. And I agree with everything, pretty much everything, that most of the people that have already spoken before me have said so far. But there's a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. The situation that we have right now is a six-bed hospital here at Weems and a sort of an emergency room. And I say sort of because their equipment is old. We all know that. Then we have a walk-in clinic in Carabel operated by Weems, which is fine. I've been there myself before many times. But the problem that I see with that clinic is that if you're having a problem or any kind of an emergency, it needs to happen between Monday and Friday, between 8:00 and 5:00. You're not allowed to have any other healthcare issue on the weekend. And that, to me, is the crux of the problem that we have here in Franklin County. We need an emergency room. We need some vehicle to treat emergency care. And I say that in all fairness because I myself even am likely to have to have some care at some time because I have a heart issue. I want to say, though, that I do believe that Franklin County has to grow, and this is a huge jump for us. It's a huge jump. I've been in the hospital industry for over 25 years myself. I retired out of it, and I can't quite imagine a big hospital in Franklin County anywhere. But I get what everyone's saying. We need, at the minimum, an emergency care facility. But I agree with the man that was up here prior to me. I think that the issue, especially if this money is coming from tax dollars, $10 million is a 40-year loan, if I understand that correctly. We are going to be paying for it for a very long time, and it's not going to get us a whole lot. So, I think that we should be voting on this. I really do. I'm also hoping that we can consider the issues that were brought before, which has to do with helicopters. That would help a lot. An ER facility would help a lot, particularly one operated by a updated someone like Sacred Heart. And the last thing is that...
I have your time, Will.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.[1063.01][1063.01][applause]
Marian Water, full-time resident, St. George Island. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm here to request that you do not obligate my tax dollars to a $10 million debt for a new Weems Hospital building. With its one-bed occupancy rate, Weems has been hemorrhaging money and surviving only with infusions of cash from the county. This is not a sustainable situation. A new building will not solve the financial problems of Weems because a new building will not attract new patients. The $10 million loan that will get us no more than an empty building and a 40-year debt will not provide any new healthcare resources to Franklin County. The long-term decline of Weems and the enormous expenses incurred by the county to keep it running indicate that we need to come up with a different answer for healthcare for our citizens. A solution has been proposed by a professional healthcare company with a proven track record in the area. I support the proposal from Ascension Sacred Heart to build, equip, and staff a state-of-the-art facility that will serve the healthcare needs of the citizens of Franklin County. Weems has served our county for many years, but the one-bed occupancy rate at Weems strongly suggests that we no longer need, nor can we afford, an inpatient hospital in Franklin County. The new model for healthcare in Franklin County proposed by Ascension Sacred Heart will better address the healthcare needs of our citizens and visitors with less financial risk to the county. Ascension Sacred Heart has committed to bringing an infusion of much-needed healthcare resources to our county. There is no other proposal that brings anything like this to the table. I urge you to join forces with Ascension Sacred Heart now to begin the process for providing our current and future healthcare needs. Thank you very much.[1202.01][1202.01][applause]
My name is Deborah Storeg. I'm from East Pointe. I've sat for a number of meetings about the hospital. I've listened to truths being told, and I've listened to untruths being told. The biggest fabrication I hear is that Sacred Heart is going to build a new ER. Michael just spoke on that. That is still our self-tax money that is going to build that facility. If Sacred Heart is so committed to Franklin County, why haven't they given us doctors to admit patients to our hospital? Why haven't they even brought specialists here? Someone said this is a healthcare issue, but it's also an issue of jobs. We cannot address one without addressing the other. With the Sacred Heart proposal, we will lose approximately 60 jobs at that hospital. Where would these people find jobs in Franklin County? They're probably not going to. So, citizens will be leaving this county. Can you imagine the number of houses that will go on the market? Knowing the community needs a hospital to attract businesses, I find it hard to believe that former mayors and mayors would support standalone ER. Another fact is we know the mortality rate will go up. So, in closing, it seems foolish to me for us to give our self-tax dollars to another county to give us less than what we have right now. I am in support of building a new hospital with Alliant and TMA. We know the CAH designation is addressed specific, so we must build on our current location. The citizens of Franklin County voted on a hospital to be built in Appalachia Cola, and I think it's about time the constituents that voted for it get what they asked for. Thank you, gentlemen.[1336.51][1336.51][applause]
Noah's applauding.
Yeah, no, I saw that. Being a house, I'll get a point. My opinion, the hospital should be centrally-located in the county. What happens if the Causeway Bridge shuts down or is closed and only people in Appalachia Cola can access the hospital? Appalachia Cola residents will have the option of going to Sacred Heart or Poughkeepsie. But what about the rest of the county? What would be the distance to another hospital be for the rest of us? The distance to another hospital is a major concern for many of us, especially those in the eastern part of the county. Not enough thought has gone into the access of medical services of other parts of the county if the hospital is in Appalachia Cola. All the county residents will have to pay for medical services for a few, basically. Do you consider it adequate care to have to wait up to one hour after a 911 call for an ambulance, then another hour to be transported to a medical facility to then to be transferred to another hospital to access the actual care that is needed? It could be three, four hours from the 911 call before getting the necessary treatment. Franklin County residents utilize Sacred Heart more than Weems. Why? Could it be the available services, facilities, staff, equipment? Will a new building bring an adequate number of doctors and specialists to provide an acceptable standard of care? Or will we be in the same situation that we are in now, only in a new building? The eastern part of the county feels there needs to be an MOA with more color county to have faster access to adequate medical services. It is closer to Tallahassee for us than it is to Appalachia Cola, and the roads are better, making it quicker to get needed medical care. Thank you, sir.[1473.16][1473.16][applause]
Hello. Gail Riglemeyer. Fact, at the last county commission meeting, Weems needed a loan from the county to make payroll. Weems plans to pay back the money when they get their hurricane medical claim. What does this say about the financial health of Weems when they need money from a hurricane claim to make payroll? Fact, at last week's Alliant-TMA special meeting, Commissioner Parrish stated that the interim CEO doesn't know how to run a hospital and wanted assurance from Alliant that they would mentor him. We don't have time, nor can we afford the hundreds of thousands of dollars each year for Alliant to train the employees at Weems. Fact, at the same Alliant-TMA special meeting, Commissioner Parrish acknowledged that significant revenue is not being collected as part of the critical access designation because Weems doesn't have the, quote, his word, "expertise." Therefore, all the potential revenue is going into File 13, his word. He wanted assurances from Alliant that they would manage this aspect of Weems. We don't have time to wait, nor the money to pay for Alliant to do their study for a year while hundreds of thousands of dollars are being left in File 13. At the Carabel Commission meeting last week, Commissioner Bolt said that the county commissioner was concerned that all employees and 10% of Franklin County residents have capital health plan insurance and Sacred Heart doesn't take it. Well, I called and learned that Dr. Farr and other Sacred Heart services in Franklin County do in fact take CHP insurance, and if a patient goes to Port St. Joe, Sacred Heart will take it there also, but it may be out of network, but it would be between the patient and CHP. This is something that can be negotiated with Sacred Heart. And at the same Carabel Commission meeting, the Carabel Board discussed the idea of withdrawing from or modifying the language in their inter-local agreement with the county for the one-cent sales tax they are currently collecting on behalf of the county. They have directed their attorney to determine what the ramifications would be if they pulled out or modified the language in their inter-local agreement. Weems is already hemorrhaging money, can't make payroll on its own, and is, if a new hospital is built, would dramatically increase its cost to pay $10 to $17 million hospital, equip it, staff it, and also pay Alliant hundreds of thousands of dollars each year for consulting fees. How can we afford that now? Where will the money come from if Carabel decides to withdraw from their inter-local agreement? I'll tell you where it will come from, ad valorem taxes. This board is elected by the people and works for the people. The city of Carabel commissioners and their constituents have already thrown their support behind Sacred Heart's proposal. I know a lot of people would have been here except for the late notice of this meeting. So, the vast majority of people east of the Appalachia Bridge and a large number of people in Appalachia want Sacred Heart and a new centrally-located emergency department. The job of this board is to act on the will of the people. I urge you to negotiate the best deal with Sacred Heart for the people and discontinue the wasted time and significant wasted amount of money associated with building a new hospital. And would everybody who supports Sacred Heart raise your spots? Thank you.
I'm sure the people want Sacred Heart.
Give us what we want. Represent us.
Richard Misak, retired commissioner, resident of St. George Island. Over the past several weeks and months, you've all heard a variety of arguments, including today, irrational, logical, and the like. There's a lot of feeling and ideas throughout the county, however, that you are going to ignore that and vote for a very narrow vested interest rather than representing all the people of Franklin County. I hope that's not true. I would ask you to simply do questions. Number one, how do you want to sleep at night? Want to go to bed knowing that you have represented all the citizens of Franklin County rather than perhaps family, friends, and then a narrow interest? And when you meet your maker, and the question is asked, did you do your duty and meet your obligations to represent all of Franklin County and its citizens in their best healthcare interest? Thank you.[1769.83][1769.83][applause]
I'm Pat O'Connell from St. George Island, and I talked to Michael and some other staff about what this proposal was because I admit when I read it, it sounded to me as if you were making a final decision today, that you were foregoing any other discussion. that you were foregoing any other discussion because it sounded like you're making a commitment to the proposal to add a wing to Weems. And Michael explained that's not true at all. This isn't closing out any options. This is not shutting off the presentation by Texas A&amp;M, which will compare the options before you. That that will come, this is merely to say to the Department of Agriculture, give us, extend this loan until we can come back to you with an actual proposal that has been based on our best judgment. So if in fact, what Michael explained at the beginning is that this does not make a commitment to Weems, if this does not change the opportunities for Ascension, Sacred Heart, or for TMH to come forward, or anybody else, then please go on the record and say that and make the motion that he has written, which I have to say is very unclear. Please amend that motion to say this, you are only giving authority to ask the Department of Agriculture if they will extend for however long it's going to take this commission to make its decision. And I told Michael, we have a lot of people in this county that know a lot of people in powerful places, and we can call Sunny Purdue tonight because we have a neighbor who is one of his friends and worked in his cabinet for eight years. If you need Sunny Purdue to call the district and ask if we can have a few more months' extension on this loan obligation we've already had since 2015, I can get that call. So please, just make it clear. I think the agriculture money is as good as it's ever going to get. It's the best rates, this is their function. Our congressman sits on the committee dealing with agriculture budget. It's before them right now. Our governor is very much involved with the Agency for Healthcare Administration. We can get, I can't believe that without asking, we're making a decision. We need to make sure that people understand, all these people and all the people David will be communicating with, that what you're doing today is not a decision. It's merely extending a loan opportunity. Thank you.
David Andrews to the Appalachian Times. One quick question. One quick question regarding what Pat O'Connell just said. It did say that you would work with Joe Bynum, the project architect. Does that mean that the project as envisioned by Mr. Bynum would be the operable project? Thank you for your voice, David.
What's the answer?
I'll address it when we get through public comments.
Donna Butterfield, I really wasn't going to talk today, but nobody believes that, I know. Okay, but this issue is kind of important. And Commissioner Noah, I appreciate you paying attention. Let's see. Authorizes me to work with Mr. Joe Bynum, project architect, on creating the proposal to proceed that will be submitted to USDA. And that means Bynum is the architect that's been dithering around with, trying to build Weems for, what, 20 years, he said? So that's what screwed it up, Michael. You got Bynum in there, that goes like, woo, woo, we don't want that again.
I didn't realize he's a devil, sorry about that.
What's the true case of the life hustle?
I couldn't stop.
Public comments.
What?
No, it's on my tip, I put a phone, I'll tell you later.
Okay.
Public comments. You know, rumors get out, lies get out, rumors, everything here always. I heard people talking about 2/3 of it lies, animals. But we'll take care of it. All right. I'll be here a little bit. I feel what we've got to do through.
All right, yes, if you'd have to. Okay. If I may, I'll answer David's question. Yes. So Joe Bynum is a person I've been working with. Yes, he has been working on the project, but I also worked with him on other issues, and one of them is, the reason I went to Joe Bynum, to be honest with you, is because he's very familiar with USDA and deals with them other than that. I became very aware of that as we dealt with him on the project. The only reason, and I'm glad Donna read it and glad Pat explained it, the only reason I'm using Joe Bynum, again, I'm sorry that his name just sent everybody off to deep if I could use that term, is on creating the proposal to proceed. And I explained, that's going to be submitted to USDA to continue the obligation of the $10 million prior to the deadline. If you read about what USDA request was, a proposal to proceed, I'm trying to get somebody who is very first with working with USDA to help us keep the loan obligated, if that's what the board wants to do. One thing I, so I hope that answers the question, David.
That question's been answered.
Kind of shaking her head, no, that still doesn't answer the question. It's off.
Michael.
Yes, sir.
That question's been answered before the vote took 10, 12 years ago. I'm not going through all that back and forth, back and forth. The people voted 12 years ago, and we supposed to be in still a hospital?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I understand.
And all this stuff, this is not a new date coming up. We have a new, we going back and have this over and over. This thing was decided 12 years ago. And y'all, same people sitting out there, what some of them do, some of them not. Most of them sitting out there now, they weren't put in, they not put in. But the majority were put, and that's what I'm going through. I'm not going to be. Boy, if you come out and take it to a vote, you totally could vote.
Do it again.
You've been to a vote. The people voted. What? Didn't you vote 15 years ago?
You vote.
New vote.
New vote.
I'm sorry about that. It don't work that way.
Why not?
Why not?
Why not?
To help clarify, the only thing I want to do, and the only reason I'm using Joe Bynum again is because of his familiarity with USDA. It has nothing to do, let me see. We're not here, I'm not trying to, any sneaky covert way to further the billing project. I want to know what USDA wants from the county, as they call this proposal to proceed, to keep the money obligated. I'll say this one thing, except for one or two people. I didn't hear anyone address, how are we going to pay the $7 million to $9 million if we go to Sacred Heart? How is the county going to pay for that facility?
What I said you asked.
Want me to tell you?
Just a question, I, Chairman, a question that I had too. One thing I had, Michael, and you can correct if I'm wrong. I keep hearing that Sacred Heart, if we go to Sacred Heart, they're going to come in and build a new building. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
I thought we had to build a building.
Yeah, we.
Okay, if we de-obligate these funds, how, if the board voted there with Sacred Heart, how are we going, where are we going to get money to build this?
You have to go out for loans. Everybody's going to say, well, you can pay down using whatever tax, the sales tax that you have in there, and then find a way to finance the grant.
But isn't the USDA loan about as cheap as rate as you're going to find?
Yes.
Keep it at a normal mortgage with a bank?
Yes, sir. And again, I'm telling you.
I got another question, Mike.
I'll be dropped.
And the issue of Sacred Heart's going to come in and build a building, that's not accurate.
We have to pay for the building.
We have to pay for the building. So if we de-obligate these funds with a very low interest rate, my question was, how would we build a building? You said they'll get a loan, but the loan costs a small amount. Oh, you got another question here. I mean, another. Well, those were my main two right there. If Sacred Heart's going to come in and build a building, no, we have to do our best. And my other question was about USDA loans, a lot lower interest than a traditional loan.
Yes, because the Hall said they're going to give you the specs. At some point, he said about using a contractor that they do. We haven't gotten that far yet, so I don't know if a bid policy allows us to do it. I don't know. But the building is your building, you have to pay for this building.
Every other project we do, we have to bid out. We cannot just pick the sole source for a billion dollar project. If it's under $10,000, I think that's below our bid.
Yeah.
Fresh old. But obviously, this ain't going to be $10,000. So it's got to go out and bid, whether it's for paving roads or whatever. It all has to go out and bid.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
If Sacred Heart builds a building, they said that it's going to close the clinic in Carebell, and keep it open only two days a week. That's going to pee the Carebell people Carebell out if they don't close it two days a week.
Well, I'm correct.
That's not correct.
Can I say this, Commissioner?
He stood right here and told us he'd close it three days a week.
Yeah, I think I want.
Exactly what he said, I heard everything the man said.
He did.
So, yes, just to show that, I hope this helps, Commissioner, in my point of view, there, again, my intent here was not to shut down any negotiations. On my Tuesday agenda, Mr. Hall, Mr. Roger Hall, I'm going to ask a special meeting from the board. Mr. Roger Hall wants to come and readdress the board of county commissions because they want to make additions to their proposal. As a matter of fact, I think next week, the date, excuse me, next week, I think a representative from Sacred Heart is going to be talking to Texas A&amp;M about their vision, and then they want to come talk to the board about it. There's no plan, it's not my intention to shut anything. Commissioners, you either want to keep this money there, keep the obligation, and I'll find out what needs to be done, report back to the board, and you guys will have the final decision on what we agreed to with USDA. If you don't like what USDA says we need to do to keep the money obligated, that's all, thank you, but no thank you, we start looking somewhere else. That's the only thing I'm here to do today. It seems like, no, no, it's just the only thing I'm here to do today is to ask you guys, do you want us to, because I am not, because, and Lord, if you could strike this before I say it, it's like with damage we do and with damage we don't. So I am walking in a straight line, as straight as possible, to get the board to tell me, because I'm not going to reach out to USDA until the board says, yes, Michael, that's the direction we want you to go in. I'm not, I'm sorry, because they will be criticized for either reaching out or not doing anything if we lose the money. I'm sorry, I've been here long enough.
The people who voted yes, and that was over 7%, they still got trust in them. The same people who didn't want it, they don't want it now. Got that same little select few out there now.
Again, I'm going to read, this is not about the proposal. This is not, I'm asking the board, do you have interest in keeping this loan obligated? If it's three months, six months, another year, tell me what you want, and I will take that. And the reason, actually, and I told earlier, who was sitting here today, if I had my way, we'd have been meeting yesterday because I would want to be able to get Joe Bynum to start this proposal to proceed. Tuesday morning, I want him on the floor, I already talked to him, he's standing by. I want him on the floor with USDA so that during the meeting, when he sends me an email or text, I will be talking to you guys about what he said, that USDA says they want. That's why we're trying to house. That's my urgency, that's, that's my urgency. We have Tuesday, and then we have the first meeting in March before we have to submit anything. I'm not going to submit anything to USDA unless this board will prove that. Now we're watching, you get criticized if you do, you get criticized if you don't. You get criticized if you stand in the middle of the street. So I'm going to bring everything to the board as it relates to this, to where we go with health care. I'm sorry, it just, you know.
Man, it's unbelievable.
Mr. Chairman. The spirit of this meeting is two parts. It's brick and mortar building, and then there's another side called management. To keep all options open and pathways incoming clear on behalf of the people of Franklin County, we must agree to keep this money obligated. We have Medicare who has said, you've got a critical access hospital that we believe in. You've got Texas A&amp;M sponsored by the federal government to come and give us perspective. You've got the United States Department of Agriculture saying, hey, guys, we've got $10 million that we potentially might loan to you. Federal, federal, federal. And we have a covenant with the federal government that has given us all this access, and all we're saying today is, on behalf of the people, here's a multi-point access to keep everything open, keep the money obligated, keep the pathway clear because we've done so much already in listening to folks who are proposing to manage our healthcare. So in order to complement all we've listened to, we must keep all pathways open, and keeping that money obligated is another pathway open for us.
Commissioner, you're free to make the motion in any manner that you want. This is my, this is my recommendation to you. It helps the board.
Mr. Chairman, you got a thing?
Yeah, I'm just trying to listen, Commissioner, I'm sure taking it out of the impetus a lot. But at the end of the day, it's been emotional today. It's been logical today, it's been all kinds of. At the end of the day, if we're just trying to keep the loan obligated, I have no problem with that. But I think the questions that Commissioner Parrish and I have asked repeatedly about sustainability hasn't been answered for both of them. Because both of them, we still have to answer how we're going to pay for it. End of the day. I had somebody challenge me yesterday to put it on paper. You know what? I couldn't. Currently, I couldn't put it on paper and make it work. So if we're just trying to obligate the funds so we can try to work out these proposals and do what's best, I'm fine with that. You know, I'm fine with staff working in there. If we're trying to do anything other than that, I'm not fine with that because I can't put it on paper and make it work.
And I apologize, Commissioner, if my wording of the request confused, caused confusion of, I apologize. It was not my intention. I was trying to put everything that I know we would need done so that I can, if it's a desire of board to move forward to obligate, to keep the funds obligated, we do that. If there's something there you don't like, I don't make motion. I do what I'm told.
It looks like. It's not going to vote or nothing else. And if city Carebell pulls out of it, that clinic's going to close unless the city Carebell runs it. If they pull out, city's going to have to run it or it closes.
Yes, sir.
If Appalachia pulls out, they're going to have to run theirs.
Pretty much.
Yeah, it's no fact, it's pretty much they'd have to run it.
But even, I'm not even trying to challenge you.
No, I'm not either.
Yeah, it's, you want the obligation money, you can pass the motion in any manner you like, Commissioner. If that's, to get the message out there, that's what we're doing. If not, Tuesday morning, call.
I'm going to make my, uh, direct the county staff to work with Mr. Joe Bynum on creating a proposal to proceed. It will be submitted to USDA to continue the obligation of $10 million prior to March 12th deadline. And then we'll see what we do after that. I don't know what all that entails, Mike. The board has not made a decision whether they're going to Sacred Heart or whether they're going to build a hospital. All that has not been decided. But I do think we need to hang on to this loan, or there'll be nothing done. That's going to be my motive.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Nothing by Commissioner. First. On the table.
Just a question. Just wanted to say, you've done what I think is right. You're keeping options open. I think that's very important for the people.
How much money are you obligating?
All the table.
Aye.
All the vote. That pays you, that's a, Commissioner, come in.
I have something, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to reiterate that this board is not obligating any of this today. We're asking the USDA to continue to have their obligation to us for these funds when they want to work out the proposal. We're not obligating the taxpayers.